Diane?
We have no exonerations today.
Wow.
New share orders as of September 11, 2013, minutes of July 10, 2013. General County Fund expenditures $211,032.35. General County Fund purchasing card $40,845. Coal Severance Fund $39,710.80. 911 account $3,034.02. Law enforcement $4,310.10. Assessor's Valuation Fund $1,0719 for a total of $299,871.17. Payroll account of $1,036,353.03. I have two budget revisions. This is moving $20,000 from contingencies to Valley Mental Health. This is, um, the last quarter of last fiscal year was not paid to them. Plus you decided on $10,000 for them to turn in invoices up to that amount. And the other is for Camp Muffley. This is clearing up the line items that have been expended from this fiscal year. The new account is now open, so all deposits will be made to the new account and all expenditures will be made from that account.
Move for approval of fiduciary orders.
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
We have a reimbursement request for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program and also a certificate of completion because they have expended all the funds. The grant reimbursement is for $8,000. And the certificate of completion, they actually spent $10,413.90 towards, towards the project.
They spent more than the grant?
Yes.
I assume they had it.
Yes, it's already been paid.
Just want to make sure someone else hasn't spent on it.
No, no. And Waites Town Community Fire Department, you actually signed the grant reimbursement last week. It was for the full amount of the grant, so now we have a certificate of completion for that as well. And they report to us for August of 2013, $18,725.82.
Move for approval of the grant?
Second. Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Renata. Sheriff Kizner.
I'm here today to present something we talked about a couple of weeks ago in a work session. As you know, we have a unique problem in our transport process division. We have two or female officers that are pregnant and one, we just got word as of Monday, that she is now off duty until after the birth of her child. And we don't know if and when she will actually be coming back to work. But if you want me to go into it, I will, other than what we discussed in the work session.
Just briefly describe what you're doing.
Okay. What we were doing was because of this situation with these two particular female employees being pregnant at the same time, they've been put on like duty. Now the one is off duty until after the birth of her child, which creates scheduling, a major scheduling problem for us where we've had to pull full-time employees from other areas like home confinement, court security, even to the point of having to pull deputies off of the road handling calls for service to fill in in the transport process area when a transport officer goes on a trip. Because we can't leave one transport officer there at the center while someone else is on a trip. So what we were asking was if the commission authorized moving two additional people from part-time status in transport process to full-time status so that we don't have those scheduling issues, so that all the shifts then would have, we needed three transport process folks on those shifts. Our shifts seem to be really heavy from Thursday to Sunday morning, Thursday evening to Sunday morning, and that's where we have our biggest problem. So what we're asking for is the approval of the commission to allocate, I forgot the exact number.
I'm guessing $75,000, that's close enough.
Seventy-two.
It's, yeah, $72,533.35. So $75,000 we'll take. But that's what we're asking the commission to approve because of the unique situation.
But this will keep you from having to pull deputies off the streets and stuff to fill in for administrative issues?
Yeah, most of the times when that happens are the days that I just said, and if we can do this, that's going to alleviate that problem altogether. Plus will alleviate us paying overtime to other full-time employees from other departments. Because when they come to work in transport process, we have to pay their overtime out of that particular budget out of transport process and not necessarily out of court security or home confinement.
And your chart didn't reflect those savings.
Excuse me?
Your chart didn't reflect those overtime savings.
No.
Yeah, so there's additional savings in addition to. So it's good.
You know, that's one of our primary responsibilities, public safety, and it's obvious based upon the information provided by the sheriff that it is compromising. And I don't see us as having little if any choice, but I'll make a motion that move that we approve the sheriff's request.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. You're on, Sheriff.
Thank you, thank you very much. That'll help us a lot. Just give these out, make some work out. What I'm going to give you, as you know, also a couple of weeks ago, we talked about courthouse security and you asked if we could come up with a couple of different proposals.
Thank you.
And we've done that. So in these packets, I'll give these to you, you can look at at your leisure and we can schedule another time on the agenda after you've had time to digest the information. There are two proposals there, you'll see the major differences in the two of them. And any questions you may have, if you want, we can do in a work session or if we just want to do them in a regular commission meeting, that's fine.
Why don't we read this first and then decide? And Diane will let you know.
Absolutely, yeah. So if it's a week or two, that's fine. We just wanted to get it to you as quickly as we could so that...
We appreciate that, Sheriff. It's very responsive. Thank you.
Lastly, we just have to acknowledge our maintenance crew, all these folks. We ask and received the okay to go ahead and construct a couple of extra rooms on the overflow area in the sheriff's office. That was done. They did a wonderful job. They were there every day. Everything matches. It doesn't even look like it's new construction. I mean, they incorporated into the other work very expertly and just, I just want to acknowledge publicly how satisfied we are with that and what a nice job they did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell your guys, Bobby, good work.
Mike Wolf. You've already taken liberty to acknowledge today, but we wanted to present you with a proclamation today to officially recognize not only the meaning of today, but also our local responders. The proclamation in front of you reads as, whereas on September the 11th, 2001, our nation was darkened by the worst attack on the American people in our history. Thousands of innocent men, women, and children perished. They were family and friends, service members, and first responders, and the tragedy of their loss left pain that will never fade and will scar our country will never forget. Whereas today, we remember the victims, their families, and the heroes who stood up during one of the darkest moments, we invite all Montingaleans to reclaim that abiding spirit of compassion by serving their communities. From volunteering with an organization to support our local communities, to collecting food and clothing for those in need, preparing care packages for men and women in uniform, there are many ways to bring service into our everyday lives. And whereas by a joint resolution approved on December the 18th, 2001, Public Law 107-89, the Congress has designated September 11 of each year's Patriot Day, and by Public Law 111-13, approved date for 21st, 2009, the Congress has requested the observance of September 11 as an annually recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now therefore, the County Commission of Montague County does hereby proclaim September the 11th, 2013, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. It also recognizes the men and women who serve our communities as emergency responders, servicemen and women, and Volunteers' Day of September 11, 2013. And I also wanted to just bring to note and an encouragement to maybe some other county organizations and folks around the county. Our agency started a week-long food drive this week voluntarily based from our employees, which will be donating food to local food pantries for the month.
There you go. Have a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you, Mike. That's very good. There's never can say enough for those people that are willing to step forward and oftentimes in a volunteer status, risk their lives to help others. Do you have any comments or anything else?
No, I, what more can you say? You know, it's a day that certainly will live throughout the history of this country.
Okay. Correspondents. Diane?
Okay. What I have is relative to the Westover annexation request. First letter is dated September 6th. This is from Timothy Stranko, Kay Casto and Chaney. Just read the first paragraph of these that we can reference them.
Yeah.
On behalf of the City of Westover, we write to address the legislative history of Chapter 8, Article 6 of the West Virginia Code, which governs municipal annexation of property. And it goes on with emails and copies of code sections. You've each gotten a copy of that.
We'll just accept them in the record today.
The second is a letter from Phil Millick from Jackson Kelly dated September 6th. The letter sent in earlier today by Westover Council invites you to interpret the law on the basis of recollections of a lobbyist for the municipal league. Such exercises are frowned upon even if Westover had interviewed a member of the legislature. That's in response to the first letter that you received. You also have a copy. And then another letter from Ryan Simonton, Kay Casto and Chaney dated September the 9th. Enclosed, please find the City of Westover's proposed findings of fact and conclusions of law in regard to the above referenced matter. Should you have any questions or require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me. Those are the three letters from the attorneys. I did receive three emails, one in favor of the annexation and two against. And these were all sent into the Moncom address as of Monday at 5:00. And you set the deadline for the issue of these.
Can you reference who they're from or something?
This is from Bill Weiss, and this is the one in favor of. There's another from Jason Day, and this was addressed to Mr. Bloom. And the third was from Jim and Polly Van Gilder. And that was again also.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think we should deal with these issues separately. The letters, I think, are appropriate to enter into the record with just that. Yeah, just as entries. And then I would like to comment more on the acknowledgement of emails and other matters.
Then you want to just make a motion to accept the two letters, or the three, actually three letters?
I would move that we accept the three letters or mailed by the, actually, primary affected parties.
Thank you.
Great, great.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those three letters will be accepted into the record. Bill?
On the acknowledgement of letters and emails regarding Westover's annexation, I have no problems with acknowledging that they have submitted them, but I want for the record, it should be noted that proper weight needs given because I do know that some of those names are not affected parties. So therefore should not receive the weight of an affected party. And that's the same thing that applies to the petition that was introduced by a non-representative. And the record says that he was a non-representative by his own statements. And I think that the weight given to that petition is also questionable at best. And I just, for the record, would like to note it. And I'm sure we'll probably have more comments regarding those in the future.
So you just...
Just acknowledge you received.
Acknowledge you received. You've got a motion.
Move that we have received the three.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that. Yeah, okay, I'll second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, that's good. Okay, any more correspondence?
No.
Okay, unfinished business. We had scheduled discussion of collaboration agreement ballpark project. We've been notified by the attorneys that they needed a little bit more time on that, so we have to delay that for at least another week. They, we want to just make sure it's right.
Right.
So is there any other unfinished business?
Bylaw change, just some minor adjustments. Still, this is the first one that was done, so it's still being worked on. Renata, you want to go to that?
Which adjustment to, what's the adjustment?
We, since it was a suggestion for the other two to include the history of the park, of how the county acquired the land, we decided to add that, we needed to add that to the Mason Dixon since we hadn't done that since this was the first one. Also, in the name of the board, we did not include advisory in the title, so that was amended to include advisory. So it would be, it's now the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board.
So this is minor clerical?
Just very minor clerical. Under objects and policies, one of the objects of the board was to assume supervision of projects that are going on, but it should have read "in cooperation with the park superintendent." That was another minor change. And also pertained to the audit, that we were requiring them to have an outside auditor, but we're going to ask the West Virginia State Auditor's Office when they do our audit to include that fund when they do their audit. That's all the changes.
Any discussion or a motion to accept those changes?
I'll move that we accept the changes. I'll second.
Have a motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Appreciate you staying on topic.
That should resolve all three, right?
We should be completely done now.
Well, actually, it doesn't matter, you know. It's when it's an act...
I know, I think you can bring it back up.
But it's better to bring it back up before someone makes an issue out of it.
Right.
Than after. So we appreciate your all's diligence and...
If I can ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So is the next plan to have all three of them to meet with you to discuss, so we can have a general meeting? We don't have to be apart, but I mean with you, just to start seeing how we can start working together and so on?
Yes.
About the super credit.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
This makes everything uniform.
Right.
With all bylaws, all marks.
Okay.
That's good.
Thank you.
That's good. Okay, any other unfinished business? Any new business? Have none listed? Hearing, none. Reports from county commissioners, Bill?
Yeah, a couple of comments. Bobby Doyle and his crew over at maintenance, when we had the public hearing down there, I took a, had a chance to look at the room that the sheriff mentioned that they had added down there as an addition. And you couldn't tell, they were correct in the description. It looks like it was, came when it was built. Did an excellent job. The other thing is that, again, for Bobby Doyle and his crew, if you haven't drove out over the Hartman Run Bridge, you need to, it's done. I just can't, it's hard for me to use a whole bunch of adjectives to describe how much better that bridge looks. If I lived in that community, you'd have to be pleased with the improvements and Bobby's guys did a good, excellent job. I mean, didn't even get any green paint on the sidewalks. So, although pleased but not surprised because I know you took pains in hiring the people that you hired with some skills to get the job done and get the job done right. And so when jobs are done right and well, I think we need to note that and it serves the public interest very well. That's it.
Thank you, Bill. Tom?
Yeah, I wasn't going to, but just right before the commission meeting, I received a phone call and I just received the letter. I'm going to read it. This is from United States District Court for the Northern District of West Virginia, Bloom plaintiff versus the Board of Education. This is the order that was just received, and I think it's informational, so everyone needs to know this. Pursuant to Title 28, United States Code, 636B1A and 636B1B, NLR, CIV, P702C, the court refers this action to the Honorable John S. Call, K-A-U-L-L, United States Magistrate Judge, who is hereby designated and authorized to consider the record and rule in the plaintiff's amended motion for the preliminary junction and for waiver of bond, including conducting the hearing scheduled for September 12, 2013 at 9:30 a.m. at the Clarksburg, West Virginia Point, a holding court, and entering into the record and order recommending the appropriate disposition of the motion. The magistrate judge is further authorized to consider and rule on any discovery request or subsequent non-dispositive pretrial motions filed in the case, including without limitation, including conducting a hearing and any motion if necessary, and entering into the record and order recommending the appropriate disposition. The court directs the clerk to transmit this to John, the Honorable John S. Call, United States Magistrate Judge, September 11, 2013, and this was signed by Irene Keely. So there will be a hearing tomorrow. It will be by the magistrate judge, well, by the district judge, is it?
District magistrate.
District magistrate at 9:30, and Irene Keely is not going to be a part of it. She has referred it to someone else.
Well...
Or maybe you could, maybe you could explain, thank you. Could you explain that in English?
He's supposed to hear the evidence.
Okay.
And he, and he issues a decision for disposition, but then at the end of that...
Okay.
He refers to her as a recommendation to be an order from her.
Gotcha, okay. And it goes on.
You have anything else?
No, that's, I just wanted to...
I drove by the bridge and I have to comment on the bridge because, you know, we've got, in the 20 years it took to reach some sort of deal on that. And Bobby, you can probably testify better than anyone on this. I think we probably did more in the last five to 10 years to make that bridge at least look halfway decent than they did in the previous 15. And I thought, when I drove it, I had to slow down. I just, I was like, is this, is this the Hartman Run Bridge? Did I take a wrong turn? It really does look nice. And your guys, I saw them over there working and they patiently and diligently did a wonderful job, so I have to echo what Bill said on that. And we thank them all for that. Okay, Sheriff, you have anything further?
No.
We have any other elected officials here? Seeing Kelly Perry, you got anything? Mike, you got anything further? Diane, you have anything? Bobby?
Yeah, thanks for everything about the bridge, but there was three cars that they knocked a gallon of paint out of, probably had to pay the rent. I'm just kidding.
My heart can't take this. I'm feeling, I was sick anyway. I was like, what?
The other thing, we were talking about ID badges for Montague County. And I spoke with Jeff and then me, Jeff, and Diane talked, and we can probably do something less than $5,000. That's the whole package. And what this will do would be to give everybody that works for Montague County, except for the sheriff's department, they have their own because they're law enforcement, is to give everybody the same badge and it'll just state what department you work in. And it'll be the department head or whoever they appoint to make sure that if somebody quits or, you know, gets dismissed or whatever, that we get those badges back.
Will that be a system similar to what the sheriff's?
Yes, sir. It's almost, it's almost the same system that the sheriff's cars has now. I spoke with Jeff, so that if we have to, we can integrate both systems together. And Jeff, they already have the camera in the county clerk's office, so we won't have to purchase a camera, just the software and everything to go with it and the cards, so we can do it for everybody in the county.
Good.
So, you know, you wanted to look into it, so I looked into it and I spoke with Jeff and for the last week, we've been digging up a lot of things. And it's the exact same software that the sheriff has, so if we need to integrate both of them, he can do that at a time.
Any exceptions they take by any of the elected officials?
By them to run a bond. Well, I'm just curious. Well, no, but I mean, we can't, I mean, Jeff can chime into this because, correct me if I'm wrong, county clerk was looking into it already correctly?
They were looking into doing some sort of ID project just for their payroll HR program.
Has anyone discussed with Carrie Blaney being the primary person to process all IDs for all new employees?
I don't think we've, anybody's approached her.
We should do that. We should do that because she's one of the few people that comes in contact with every new employee.
Right, since Jeff was working on the HR part of it with bookkeeping dinner, maybe I can just have him, talk to him and see if they want to integrate all this at one time. If it's $5,000 or less, do we want to proceed on it? Do you want us to have a purchase order?
I think it's, I think it's a good idea. And I don't think $5,000 is prohibitive whatsoever. I think it adds to the general security, general security of the public. I just, my question relates to whether there'll be any trouble with any of the judges or probation, these different groups.
They don't work for Montague County.
No. And are we going to treat them separately? Are we going to ask them to be part of this or what?
They work for the state, so we can't give them a Montague County ID tag. They work for the state of West Virginia, the D.C. court?
They work, he works for us.
If, if I might interrupt a bit, if, excuse me, if that's part of our entry process to come in the courthouse, it doesn't make any difference who they work for.
It's not going to be the same court, sir?
No, but it doesn't make any difference who they work for.
Okay.
If we have a security process procedure for this building, regardless of who walks through that door, if they don't comply, then it's a breach of security.
You know where I was going, that's where I was.
Exactly, well, I didn't know, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's, that's...
It's not a discretionary, it's not discretionary for anyone.
Okay.
It's an access issue to the courthouse and safety.
See, I was trying to figure out where you have, where you have state and county intermingled. It's like, okay, the court report for the judge, is that county or is that state? The people in there, they're county and people in the state. You know, that, that's what I was trying to get at, exactly what Bill was saying. Do, can we require, not that what Bill says that we can require, I don't, I don't know, but Bill...
But they step across.
That's his background experience.
The only other alternative, Bobby, is...
Pay attention here, I'm sorry.
The only other alternative to that is, and we haven't addressed this issue, is visitors to this courthouse, non-employees. Now, if, if some people who are working for the courts or anyone else want to be considered visitors with not a regular access to the building, then we may have to look at visitor passes. So that the court security would, when someone enters the building, if they have the employee passes, then they can go ahead and enter on that. If they don't have the employee, they would have to have a visitor's pass with a sticker that would identify them as a visitor. So that anyone in this courthouse who saw a person in the courthouse could visually look at that person and say whether they're an employee or a visitor. And if they don't have one or the other, then they don't belong in this building.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're discussing. I would say, I would say that that would be a good thing, but it's going to be hard to give somebody a visitor tag that comes in to this courthouse or, well, magistrate court's going to be easy because they have one entrance. Okay? So if we have six or seven different entrances, it's going to be hard to give a visitor's tag. If you guys, you know, whatever the sheriff opted in the plan, then it would probably be easier because I spoke with Gary and some about the one entrance way. be easier, because I spoke with Gary and some about the one entrance way, and that would be easier to give, to keep track of everybody in and out, because they would have to give that visitor's tag back when they leave. Now, we've got to think about that also.
Well, that, it's a question of where the priorities are.
I understand.
I mean, if we're going to have employee ID tags for security, and yet compromise it for anyone else to walk in and out of the building, then it serves no purpose.
That's, that's.
Let Sheriff, let Sheriff very look forward to this, Bob. I have some questions.
What I'm wondering is, as much as I'd like, and I want to ask, but I want to move forward, but I see the questions that are now being brought up, I'd like this all as one package, so when we decide, if we decide on one of the plans.
Okay.
Then at the same time, if you could also come back with us, you can see a couple of questions. So we possibly would have two different tags, one for county, one for the state, and so on, and then possibly a third for visitors, and then that would only work basically if there is only one entrance and exit, something along that line. Could you also, just so we don't cause any problems, I look, you were recommended, that we say, this is the plan we're looking to do to the different heads of the departments. Do you see any concerns? Because they may bring up something that we might not think of something, and then we could all come back and, and let's do it like on a work session, only because I have a feeling it's three separate parts then.
And there is.
And I like the idea, so I want to move forward, I think we all do, but instead of doing a piecemeal, and we find out we do one thing, and then like you said, oh, now we forgot the visitors, now we have to make a change, we can do it all together.
And there is another group of individuals that visit the courthouse in and out frequently, and that's attorneys.
Right.
You know, may not, what we may need to look at is discussing different types of badges.
Right.
But if they want to have open access, they have to get an ID. If they don't, if they want to have to get a visitor's pass every time they come in the building, then that's their choice.
Can I ask a question? If they want, if we want to do an open pass for the attorneys, if Jeff could come up with a design, just say, and then could we charge them a fee for the card like we do for the access cards?
Yeah, we could, we could, we could charge, charge a fee. I'm pretty sure we could charge a fee to cover the cost.
Yeah, just to cost of the card. Yes, we're not in for a profit.
But we can qualify this. We've got people, other than attorneys, that come in and out here regularly, computer people, information people, and all kinds of people. I mean, so we've got a group that are regular, regulars, that, that we, Bill's idea of having sort of a separate stage to assign, I think, all that, I don't know if you, all that comes into play.
Could we color code them?
You want to go take a break? I don't know. Why don't we just, why don't we just spend, go to recess for a minute?
Why don't you recess?
Sorry. That's all right. Go ahead.
You want to recess?
You want us to go ahead and say? Just go ahead. Okay.
Maybe we could color code them. Somebody, attorneys wear green, employees wear yellow, state people wear blue. Could we color code?
Right.
We could color code, and then we also have to think about the delivery services, vendors, like you say, the after-hours access.
I think what we need to do is, we need to get some information together, then put it on agenda for a work session.
Yeah.
That's what I said. Or we need to have a method to get input from regular users of the courthouse that are non-employees of the county. We want to give them an opportunity to comment. Who knows, we may get some good ideas.
You've got taxpayers.
That are more practical than what we're looking at, but we need to do that.
I'm now starting to see it's a little more complex, and I thought it was going to be very simple by just having one exit and badges, but I think it's a little more complex. I don't want to make it so that people do not want to come to the courthouse, but at the same time, I want them to realize that they will come and, you know, we have a procedure, and everyone's going to be treated equitably.
And one other thing we got to bring into the picture while we're talking is, I think it was last week or the eight, nine days ago, in a tax office, there was people lined out the door.
Were there?
Yes.
You've got thousands of taxpayers.
Okay, so to meet the last, I don't know what day that was, Kelly, but I've seen them.
August 30th.
Okay, and they were lined out the door at 9:00 in the morning.
Really?
So what we've got to do is, we've got to think about this, if we're going to give visitor's tags, that we're going to have, you know, there was probably, I'm guessing, what, 100? You know, just rounding it off, 100 people down there, okay?
And I don't want to make more work.
And he means it one time. He doesn't mean that they were all there at one time.
Well, and I think we don't want to make more work, but at the same time, I think the idea is that we just have to figure out how we want to uniform this and put it all together. I think it's worth really looking at, and I think it just will resolve a lot of the issues that are going on. I think the harder part will be how we do the visitors, you know, and how we do that.
Okay. We'll put something together and get back with you.
Okay.
Commissioner Cowan had to step out because of potential illness, so we'll proceed. Any other officials? Mark, you came in after we gave.
Just, I wanted to make sure the paper has, too, from a standpoint where they feel that these are, they're out in Star City, beginning with this week, then we'll conclude with Union in about another week or two, so, right now, they're in Star City.
Good. I tell you, there is a very favorable response to your reaching out to the community, and I think that you should feel very good about that, and your people, obviously, are doing a good job, because the comments that I've heard have all been positive.
We're pleased.
Comments from the public? You had your hand up.
I was just going to mention that.
Did you get your name? Did you need to come up here so we can, so that we should get it for the record, your name and?
Address.
Address, I'm sorry.
I'm Debbie Pie, and I'm in Taste Valley, West Virginia, and I'm up here on business. But what it is, is as a vendor, I used to go to the state house an awful lot, and what they do down there for security is that they have one entrance, and then, of course, they have the security bars that walk through, just like the airports, and they have a little conveyor belt that they look at, you know, through your purse, and then they give you a card, and, but they also, too, ask you where you're going, and they document that. So, but then, on the way out, they have these little boxes that you can drop your visitor card in at any of the boxes going out. So in other words, those doors, you can go out, but not in. So that might just be something for you to look into or think about, too. It's the way that they operate down there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Going once? You have a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.